Council Agenda: Township Precipity Troy Hills, regular Township Council meeting of May 21st, 2024. Introduction, posting of notice. Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting office on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on January 4th, 2024, what has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on January 8th, 2024. Can I ask everyone to please rise for the flag salute? Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
All of my attendance are Mayor James Barbario, Business Administrator Jamie Cryon, Township Attorney Michael Avery, Municipal Clerk Colette Madden. Council President, you have a quorum. May I begin?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, June 11th, 2024, at 7:00 PM is the Agenda meeting. June 25th, 2024, at 7:00 PM is the regular meeting. Ordinances, second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 2024-06, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, establishing chapter 288 entitled "Privately Owned Salt Storage." The Notice of Ordinance 2024-06 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, on April 22nd, 2024, introduced at the April 16th, 2024, regular meeting. May I please have a motion to accept ordinance 2024, be heard in its second and final reading by title only?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, public hearing. Motion to open up the public hearing for ordinance 2024-06.
Motion.
It's okay, second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The floor is open to the public on this ordinance only.
(Inaudible) Nick Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. Just very brief, you could walk into any Home Depot and buy salt and do whatever you want with it, or other chemicals besides salt that are even worse. A lot of these landscapers, when they come into town, they slit the bag, they get done with their solder, guess where the plastic bag winds up? Out there somewhere. So, I don't know what this ordinance is, but salt is a big problem, it has a big cumulative effect. It's in the water and, you know, I hope the ordinance is really significant in some way in improving the condition.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, may I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
No, this ain't closing. This is just on the ordinance.
This is on the ordinance. This is only on the ordinance. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law, may I please have a motion to approve the resolution, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law, may I please have a motion to approve the resolution, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2024-07, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending chapter 225 land use subdivision and site plan to create Article 16 related to stormwater management controls. The notice for ordinance 2024-07 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, on April 26th, and introduced at the April 16th, 2024, regular meeting. May I please have a motion to accept ordinance 2024-07 may be heard in second and final reading?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes, public hearing. May I please have a motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2024-07?
Motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. McGrath, second.
Second.
Who's seconded? Frank? Oh, Mr. Neglia. Okay, roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public on this ordinance only. Okay, seeing, coming up, Nick, come on up.
The way I understand this, NJDEP is finally forcing or mandating Precipity to update its stormwater. The only thing I can say, we've been in the Dark Ages, we've lacked scrutiny and we lacked due diligence in our stormwater management. When a developer comes to town, his plan, that's the plan. Now, I want to bring your attention one more time, and for the last time, I hope, to Water View. And what I'm going to read to you right now was in effect since the year 2004. And it says, "Any land area used as a nonstructural stormwater management measure to meet the performance standards of NJAC 7854 and 5.5 shall be dedicated to a government agency subjected to a conservation restriction filled with the appropriate clerk county clerk's office or subject to department approval equivalent restriction that ensures the measure and equivalent stormwater management and should be approved by the reviewing agency in its perpetuity." What that means, we paid $4 million plus for a buffer we called "open space." The developer could have been forced to zone as part of his plan. He could have zoned that as a nonstructural stormwater component. This community would not have spent one cent of its local open space. And the mayor used to say, well, I went to Morris Town with two other guys, Nelson was one and John the Magician from Mountain Lakes. The reason we went was because we found out they were trying to get money, not for the 26 acres that was promised, but for the 10 acres or less. It could have been zoned. So, we tried to make them aware of it. Interactive map from the Highlands, the 300-foot buffer everybody was talking about, there it is, right there. The information was available at the time, called an advanced property report, interactive map. That's the 300-foot buffer. We could have not listened to the developer or made the developer give us the 300-foot buffer, but we didn't know stormwater at the time. I guess, you know. And here's the big kahuna here, the Troy Brook Report. It actually mentions, was it Block 421, Lot 421, Block 29, to be saved in perpetuity for groundwater recharge. It had some of the best soils, forested, steep slopes, and all this was ignored. So, it's too late now, but I get to finally tell the truth about stormwater. So, now, it's, like I said, sometimes it's just too late, but if we knew our stormwater regulations, we don't have an environmental commission, we only have the committee, and it's up to the mayor whether he wants to committee. So, if we listen to an attorney like Mr. Ringlessino, he's going to take you off for his developer friends. And he got $4 million out of this town. Legalized theft of honest services is the only way I know how to say it. And I have the trace, I don't have enough time, from Green Acres, the whole history of what happened, the whole history. I have it. If you're interested, I mean, I could send it to you.
Three seconds, sir.
All right? But goodness, for the state of New Jersey and making Precipity do finally what it should have been doing all along. But I'd like to know, hey, is there any way we can get $4 million back?
Okay. Can I motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2024-07, please?
Can I just respond?
Sure.
Nick, you know, I understand what you're saying. This ordinance is good, and we look forward, and we move forward, and more people are aware of stormwater controls and how important that is, and the Precipity Environmental Advisory Committee will, the Precipity Environmental Advisory Committee is on top of this too, so we are all.
I gave you a clerk's.
And I can't. Back and forth.
Okay, okay, we saw these pictures.
They received it, Nick.
We saw the pictures, yeah.
Council President, if I may make correction on what Mr. Homiak said with regards to, and he's talking about the Water View property, saying that in, I think it was 2012 or 13, that the township didn't go for the whole 26 acres. That's not true. In 2013, we went for the whole 26 acres. We were denied from the county any funding, and yes, Nelson was there, as well as Mr. Homiak. Then, as you remember, Council President, fast forward to 2015, when the courts came out with the new affordable housing rules, then that's when we went for the 10 acres because they were knocking at 11 acres, actually, and the rest would preserve to perpetuity with regards to that. I mean, that's what I remember, Nick, so, and we got the grant from the state, we had some Green Acres money left over as well to purchase 11 acres in the back, or you would have had affordable housing. That's really what happened over there. I'm sure you remember, Council President.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Floor is closed, whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution for above ordinance of 2024-07. May I please have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2024-08, bond ordinance providing for various water utility capital improvements in and by the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, appropriating $5,300,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of $5,300,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Notice of Ordinance of 2024-08 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, on April 22nd, 2024, and introduced at the April 16th, 2024, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2024, which should be heard in its session and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez.
Oh, yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Public hearing. Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2024-08.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McGrath, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Floor is open to the public on this ordinance only. Okay, seeing no one, can I please have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Neglia.
Neglia. Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, floor is closed, whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution of the above ordinance for 2024-08.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2024-10, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township Precipity Troy Hills authorizing the payment of claims without a claimant certification pursuant to NJSA 40-5-16 and NJAC 5-30-98.6. Notice for the ordinance of 2024-10 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, on April 22nd, 2024, introduced at the April 16th, 2024, regular meeting. Can I please have a motion to accept ordinance 2024-10?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Public hearing. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2024-10, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Floor is open to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one, can I have a motion to close, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law, can I please have a motion to approve the resolution for the above ordinance of 2024-10?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. We're moving on to the public session. Can I please entertain a motion to open the public session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
So, the floor is open now to the public to speak on any matter. You will have five minutes to speak. This will not be a back and forth or a question and answer session. You will speak, then you will take a seat, and then the council will either answer questions or they won't. That's at their discretion.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Iarcain, 47, New England Drive. I'm here kind of to thank the council for the support that you have given me over the last 35 years. I am a 53-year resident in Precipity. I am here tonight to announce my retirement from the Precipity Zoning Board of Adjustment effective May 31st, 2024. My 35 years as a member and 25 years as a chairman respectfully have been a labor of love. I've always felt our board has acted in a manner that satisfied the residents, the town, and the variance applicants in a just and fair manner. Very few of our applications on appeal were, sorry, very few of our applications on appeal were not overruled, were upheld, and were returned to the board for further examination. We received many compliments, too many to count for the work we did.
Sir, can you please speak closer to the mic?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. As an aside, it's interesting that Tom Dinsmore and I were appointed within a week of each other, and that both of us have served continuously for almost 35 years. Tom, however, switched to the planning board a number of years ago. I would like to thank the many council people who had confidence in me over the years. A shout-out goes to Joe Weisberg, Bill Clark, Jack Conway, Mike DiPiero, and the late Dottie Jergel, who originally appointed me back in 1990. Some other names that come to mind are Paul Karifi, Loretta Grignani, Frank Neglia, and the late Jimmy Vigilante, and many more. I never thought I would voluntarily resign from the board, but figured that either Rhonda Maggio or Steve Piolo would wheel me out. I wish the best for Precipity, a town that has been my home for two-thirds of my life. I would also like to give a shout-out to two mayors for their efforts to make Precipity a better place. Jamie Barbario and my late, dear, dear friend, Frank Priori. God bless you all.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for your service, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Anyone else?
Bernie Clark in here. I am going to talk about the correspondence I had with the council and Jamie Cryon, Jamie Cryon, rather, over the last few days about the budget and the focus, what I think the overemphasis on trying to raise the credit rating of the town from its current very healthy AA2 Moody's rating to a higher one is a justification for increasing taxes once again this year, and that will be a total of 20, over 21% in the last three years. So, my points that I was making in the information I sent to all of you was that there's too much emphasis on trying to raise the credit rating. What is it worth? Well, I went to UBS, which is one of the largest financial institutions in the world, and got some unbiased information that two basis points, maybe a little more, that's not worth a whole lot. In the example I shared with you, $6,000 a year on 30 million. Jamie came back with, you opted for $50 million and you went to your expert who said it was more, 10 basis points. Now, your expert is the town's.
Yes.
Expert, which means you're.
Which means he actually does this for a living.
No, it means you're paying him to do this. You are paying him to do this, and he knew what answer you wanted. So, in any case, my bigger point was, I've heard a lot of talk from some of the council members that there's, whether it's 40 or 60, referring to them and other people may have, is phantom jobs that aren't being filled. There's other things I pointed out at the last meeting where I think we're either overexpensing or underestimating revenues, but if you eliminate one of those phantom jobs at, say, a salary of $50,000 from the budget, phantom meaning they don't exist, it hasn't been filled for years, then we're back at, that's more than, that will more than cover the interest rate differential even using your higher end 50, you know, calculation. 50 million in bonds, which I don't think we're going to be issuing anytime in the near future, maybe, you know, differently, usually it's about 30 million. So, I would just ask the council to consider this, and I have, I'm sure I'm about to be cut off, so I'll just jump to one other thing that I noticed on the agenda today that I find troublesome. With all this talk about controlling expenses and budget, there is suddenly a resolution towards the end of this meeting where it will authorize a town to hire a public relations consulting firm. What in the world do we need a public relations consulting firm here for, is my question. I'd love to hear comments from you after I sit down. Thank you.
Am I allowed to make a comment? We wait for everybody to come up.
No, no, you can comment on this one now specifically. We can do one by one. So, he's had comments, so you guys can respond to that at this point.
Oh, okay. I had the same questions and did receive the same letters and explanations, and I appreciate the explanations on the bond and credit ratings, which is pretty confusing overall. I was copied on the administration's report, response to you this afternoon, around 4:00 I saw it. I was wondering about that magic number that I was asking about last time that would not hurt our credit and bond ratings, and how that number would compare to some of the requested cost savings I had inquired about, and how that compares to using half the $5 million surplus. It appears to me, after reading your comments and Mr. Cryon's, that a small decrease requested in the budget would not really have risked our bond rating. After all, it would not have impacted the taxpayers. Thank you.
What I would just maybe add to that was separately something that I also have been openly questioning is why there's a need in relate, when it comes to the consent agenda for the public relations consultant, which is direct development, that's at a cost of about $60,000. And in my view, I voted on that contract last year because I wanted to give them a chance to enhance and improve the way that we communicate with residents, and I don't think they've done that. In fact, if you look at our Facebook page, a majority of the posts are images with text which deprioritize the way our Facebook page goes out to people. So, in short, I don't see a need to renew that contract, especially because we're also trying to hire a communications specialist under the administration at about $70,000 a year. So, I think it should be one or the other, but it cannot be both.
Okay, anyone else from the public that would like to make any comments?
I live out of town at the present. From June 1982 to December 2023, 41 and a half years, my wife and I lived in Lake Hiawatha, Precipity. We raised our daughter and son here. We would really, we would have really liked to have stayed here, but one of the big reasons why we left Lake Hiawatha is because the taxes keep going up. President Trump has already announced federal tax cuts and spending cuts. Meanwhile, Joe Biden and Chris Christie, who are, who is our former governor, raised gas taxes and other taxes as well. My wife and I know of neighbors in Lake Hiawatha and Precipity who are unhappy and will move out of town in the next few years, and that's not a few people, that's quite a few, lots of people. I wanted to thank Councilman Musella and Councilwoman Hernandez for fighting for the residents of Precipity, for looking for ways to cut spending and taxes. And congratulations, Councilman Musella, in being inducted into the 1995 Society and Americans' Future at the upcoming Americans' Future 2024 Annual Gala being held in Washington, DC on May 30th. That's it.
Anyone else? All right, come on up.
Nick Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. This is a correspondence from Green Acres concerning the Water View. After our phone conversation earlier today, I took a closer look at the file for Block 421, Lot 29, Water View, to determine the earliest time Green Acres was made aware of the township's intent to purchase the property as open space, as I believe this is the issue you're trying to resolve. For your information, I took over the file in late 2016 and had not familiarized myself with the status of the inactive file from before that time. Water View appears to be a file that was created in 2013, as you suggested. However, the township did not pursue it at this time.
However, the township did not pursue it at this time. It wasn't until two thousand seventeen that it became an active file and an updated project reference map with the decreased acreage was submitted. Therefore, I want to correct my earlier statement that the township did not identify this property in two thousand thirteen. The township did identify the property in November two thousand thirteen. However, they did not pursue it. The project reference map submitted in two thousand thirteen identified the total acreage, twenty-six point seven-five acres, to be encumbered. It would appear that decision was made after that time to subdivide the lot and encumber only nine point two-six acres as of two thousand seventeen. I apologize for the confusion. Two thousand thirteen was the promise, the no rezone, it will be open space. Affordable housing was suspended at the time. Affordable housing does not take property designated for open space, and especially that property because of its environmental qualities. Hopefully, this will rest forever. And thank you, Amy, and I have all of her contacts, and I've been holding this inside me for a long time, and I finally got it out. So, Mayor, what you're saying is not true. Mr. John Anglosino is leading his town by the nose, and he got four million dollars plus of something that simply could have been zoned. So.
I need to respond, if you don't mind, Council President. He's done speaking. First and foremost, Nick, you're absolutely incorrect. You were at the meeting at the county with regards to their twenty-six acres, and we did a presentation. You were an objector to it, you and Nelson. No, this ain't back and forth. I mean, it's up to the Council President.
No, 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 we can't, Nick.
You were an objector, you were an objector to us getting that property. We weren't seeking Green Acres money, we were seeking county open space money. That's the difference, okay? We give them, we give them the most open space trust fund money, but they denied us. They denied us based on some of the comments, I think, that you and Mr. Nelson made. So, we didn't get the seven point five million, I think that was the amount we requested, because at that time, that twenty-six acres really wasn't worth much money. It was worth, I think that time when the taxes were told us, it was seven point five million. But what happened was, in two thousand fifteen, I think it was March tenth, two thousand fifteen, when the Supreme Court came out with a decision on affordable housing, that property went from seven point five million in one day to twenty-five million. Of course, we couldn't purchase twenty-five million dollars of open space trust fund money at that time, but we went in front of the county, County Open Space Committee, Nick was there, Jonathan was there, and the bottom line is, they were objectors. We didn't get, we didn't get the grant, we were turned down, and the grant went to Mendham instead of Parsippany. I wrote a letter with regards to the county telling them that we give the most amount of money, but we get the least back at that time. So, that's exactly what took place. So, you might want to check the county records.
Okay, anyone else? Come on up.
Good evening. Hey. Vijay Pancharmya from Glenmont Commons. I've been here before many times. I'm coming here to find the status on Glenmont Commons roads. Last time when I was here, there was a meeting between builder and township, maybe mayor and council members. Looking for some update because been about close to eight months.
That's correct. Let him finish.
Sorry, sorry.
Right, so residents are, you know, obviously getting quite impatient. They really wanted to come here in full force. Since today, you know, you had a special agenda on budget, we are holding them off, but I'm here in, you know, to represent them, to get some good update, positive update in this regard, so.
All right, so we met with the developer. The utilities were checking, I think I reported last maybe
Hold on, before, before you start, sir, you're finished, right? We just have to take a seat, please.
So, we met with the utilities, part of accepting those roads. And just so, for the members of the public that haven't been here before, these are not township roads. This is the Glenmont Development, those roads have been there for thirty years, the township has plowed them and salted them, but they've never been turned over to the township, they've never been accepted by the township. The problem is, the roads are in disrepair, everybody agrees to that, and the developer, I think, bears responsibility for the roads, as does the homeowners association, so there's some dispute on both sides with regard to that. But in any event, after the meeting with the developer, the sewer utility wanted to go check those pipes because those sewer lines are going to be connected, Castor Line wants to go through there. We want to make sure that those aren't in the roadway, so if any of the sewer lines have to be dug up or repaired, then the developer's going to be responsible, obviously, for doing that and fixing the roads as well. The sewer utility advised me that they had done all of the videoing of those and that it looks like the sewer lines are good. Now, they have to video the storm sewers to make sure that those haven't settled or in bad shape, because once the town accepts them, then it becomes the town's problem. And then, I just have to get an update from the water utility, because they're going to check the water lines as well, because the ultimate goal is to find out what if any of those lines run under the road, because that'll necessitate some road repair. So, I would anticipate by the next meeting, we'll have the response back on the storm water and then the water. But the sewers themselves are, look to be in pretty good shape. The head of the sewer utility, Mr. Beckmeyer, just wants to look at the videos himself. His inspector said, hey, we videoed them, they look fine. The other thing is, the same developer has recently filed a suit against us because we denied an Oprah request because the town paid for an engineer to do a report as to whether or not the township could handle the additional flow from Castor Line, which is actually in Denville. So, that report, the township is going to rely on when it makes its decision whether or not to be able, that we have the ability to take the sewer. The developer asked for that report. We said, you don't get it because it's pre-decisional, and now they filed suit. So, that, that's kind of the way it's going. I hope that's not an indication of what we're going to see down the road, but that's the latest. And hopefully, by next month, we'll be, we'll know whether the other two lines are good as well.
Anyone else?
Richard Suarez, Parsippany. Thirteen days ago, I sent everyone here two emails, one regarding the possibility of revamping or changing some of the ongoing procedures in recycling in hopes of increasing revenues on the city tonnage report and decreasing the tipping fees that the city pays for everything that isn't recycled. I also sent a email out to everyone here regarding the, the business, and I use the term loosely, that had set up shop at the corner of Beverwick and Route forty-six, about the obscene nature of the banners. The only two people who responded, and this is thirteen days ago, were Councilmember Musella and Councilmember Hernandez. Everyone else, it's nothing but crickets. What is the objection to trying to improve the recycling? The city of South Orange increased their tonnage grant money by eighty-one thousand dollars, and, okay? That's a city of seventeen thousand people. Parsippany's about fifty-five thousand and change. If we went from the single stream system that we have now to separating plastic, glass, and cans from paper, because to separate it is labor intensive. Once you mix it, once it's commingled, the money you are getting for that product goes down dramatically. I fail to see, excuse me. It's not going to shut up. All right, I fail to see why I'm getting resistance. What's the harm in trying, what's the harm in trying to save the taxpayers' money by improving the recycling program? If anybody can tell, tell me an objection to that, I'd be glad to hear it. I also think that the monies that keep going into the rainy day fund for, for the city will wind up being used next year, which is an election year, when the taxes won't go up, or they'll go up very, very little. And everybody can pat themselves on the back and say, what a great job we did, when, when we know that's not the case. We know the budget's being padded now to use next year. Also, I would like to thank the Township Clerk's Office. I asked for some, some Oprah material, and your staff got it back to me in one day. I do appreciate that, they did a great job.
Thank you, they're great.
All right? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Cryan, was, was Mr. Walsh going to look into that?
Yes, yeah, Council President, he is looking into it.
Okay.
And he's, yeah, right now, he doesn't see a reason to change.
Okay.
But he's definitely interested in looking into it to find any reduction that he can get.
Okay.
Look, we have a, as you've mentioned, Council President, we have a sanitation department and a recycling coordinator who are very dedicated to doing their best for the township. They are definitely looking to get the lowest costs as they possibly can. They wouldn't look to just, you know, have something
Yeah, no, that's what I, I thought that he was looking into.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, doesn't it also depend on the county and what they do? Or not? So.
Yeah, Mr. Walsh brought that up.
He did say that, yes.
He brought it up that the county wasn't accepting
Yeah.
single stream recycling, they're only accepting single stream. He brought that up in the, the budget meeting.
Yeah, yeah. So, that would be an issue for Parsippany.
Go ahead, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Demond Sherman, I'm from Glenmont Commons in Parsippany. I just have a follow-up question to Mr. Pancharmya regarding the roads, actually. Once the assessment's done in terms of the sewer line and found that all the system, all the lines are fine, what's going to be the outcome in terms of, in terms of getting the roads to fix? I'm a single-family homeowner, and I have nothing to do with the HOA and all the politics behind the HOA and, and the city not having the ownership of the roads, still paying the full amount of taxes, actually. I just need to know what's going to be the outcome once all the sewer systems considered as fine? Are we going to have a long-term solution to rebuilding the road in our community? Please look into this, we would like to find out, actually.
Can you respond, Council? Please.
Yeah, listen, we hope there's a long-term solution. I think the developer's waiting to find out what the status is of those utilities to see what we're going to be looking for from them, but I think, as you folks already know, the estimate was like four point five million to bring those roads up to town standard, and they're not the town's roads. Their developer owns half the roads, and I think the homeowners association owns the other half. So, the town's doing as much as it can, but, you know, we have to balance that with, we got to protect the rest of the taxpayers, because it's not fair to them to have to, you know, lay out four and a half million dollars for roads that they didn't accept. And we could debate that, but the hopeful outcome is that developer says, yes, okay, I'm going to bring those up to town code, and then we're going to, the town will be in a position to accept them. But that's going to be up to the developer.
Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. Tony Fasano, forty-one Robin Hood Road. The answer to that gentleman's question about recycling, I was at the seat at the table meeting, met with nine other mayors, that single source is what they can only accept in Morris County.
Just speak a little bit closer to the mic.
They turned around and go away from single source. We'll be picking up recycle, each type of recycle once a week for every three weeks. The only thing it's actually paying right now is cardboard. That's the only thing that's going against our tipping fees. Now, we sat down, suggested they're going to turn around and try to get with each one of the mayors so that we can negotiate on a county basis versus a town basis. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Sam Lapkosty, I live in Parsippany almost like forty-five years, and in this moment, I would like to have, I have a question for Mayor and councils, Paul Kariffi, Frank Niglia, and Matt McGrath. I selected these people because at the time, they support, they supported all the time tax increases, like PLAs, pilot, and so on. What is your role? To make residents of Parsippany happy, or make happy only about yourself? When discussion about pilots was just begun, I remember my short conversation with John, I don't remember his last name, attorney, who represent most construction companies for the pilots. And I told him, we have totally different goals. He takes care about his clients and his own pocket, but I'm, as many other residents, take care only about my budget. Please do not forget, we elected you, and you should work for us, and not for somebody else. And last time, I remember, you ignore opinion more than man counted residents. This is not good, and we will remember this. In the same time, I would like to say thank you for the two councils who tried to support residents, which is Judy Hernandez and Justin Musella. Thank you, them. Thank you.
I'm going to respond real quick. Sir, the municipal part of this budget is being increased by six dollars and change. I have a question for you. Have you gone and given this speech to the Board of Ed? Because their increase is a lot more. Mr. Homiak came up and said, well, my taxes are going up a few hundred dollars this year. Well, guess what? Ours is six dollars and change per month, which equals seventy-something dollars for the year. So, where's the rest of it? So, I would hope that you're going, and the other gentleman are going, to the Board of Ed meetings and making the same speech. That's all I have to say. Okay, okay, it's not a back and forth. You can't, you can't speak from the audience, sir. Please continue, Mr. Kariffi. No, that's it, that's all.
I just want to add a couple of things, too. So, so I actually just started on one-one, so I, I've never talked about a PLA or pilot in my time here on council, but I do want to share again, and I've shared this a bunch of times, but there's obviously a bunch of people in the room. As of over about the last four years, we've had about two hundred million dollars in tax reassessments, which means that we, as the town, have to pay two point nine two one million back in for what those folks that were paying as a commercial entity, we're now paying. So, I call it three million dollars that we have to make up because commercial has left, okay? As you've heard, there's a billion dollars that has been asked in a tax reassess. That will be thirty million dollars at roughly three percent that will be taken back, and we, the town, will have to come up with a way to pay for it. So, what happens in that model? Well, there's a couple of things in my mind. One, we start cutting services, right? Because that's going to be a big piece of it. You look at the cost along what these things are, you're going to have to start removing services. Maybe it's water, sewer, garbage. You're going to have to look at all those different things as we look at what those things are. Or, we're going to have to prepare for things. I've talked about PFOS multiple times with water treatment. You can go back and listen to Sean Andres talk about somewhere between thirty and ninety million dollars that we're going to have to pay to remove this from our water. We have to replace piping, two hundred twenty miles, fifty-two eighty, times four hundred per square foot, four hundred sixty-four million dollars that we're going to have to pay over a period of time. Glenmont Commons, they need their roads fixed. There's a lot of different things that go into when you look at what's inside of a budget, what can we pull out, what can we not? And I've made a lot of warnings that I see your things coming. Now, I'm new. Someone came up and said it's going to be a zero percent budget next time, and I, I actually took the time to sit with some of the folks here to talk about theirs. We spent over an hour and a half together talking about different opinions on what we think are overstatements on revenue, what I see is going on in our town. The budget that I see in front of me, I'm voting on because I think it's solid. It would be in the mayor's best interest to have zero percent right now, and zero percent next, right? That would be great for him. He's the mayor that brought two zeros in the last two years. But he's bringing forward a budget that I think is reasonable. I sat with Val from our auditor, and I trust the team that's up here putting this together. And I realize that this is a difficult time for a lot of people, right? We talked about what are all the different increases, right? From inflation, consumer price index, those things hit us just like they hit everybody else, and we're, I think we're doing our best to keep those numbers low. But I keep saying the same thing. The fact that everybody came out today, I love it, and I hope you guys continue to come to these council meetings and listen to what's happening in our town, and how we can fight and think of different ways. I've offered ways to fill these positions, leveraging students from the high in the hills, talking about VOTEC. Can we bring those folks in to become inspectors where we have a blight, where we're outsourcing those people? To me, this is a strong budget, and I think we've made a lot of cuts, the things that I asked the mayor to cut out, we realized that they were cut and they sent new sheets to us. So, I feel it's a very strong budget, but I keep warning people, listen to all the things going on in town, and please understand, there's a lot of risk right now, we need to be prepared for the future. That's my opinion.
No, 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 you can't, you can't.
Afterwards. I will stay till the end, sir. We will definitely talk.
Okay, uh, anyone else? Come on up.
Mayor and council, for those who don't know me, my name is Thomas Bushnell, because I'm representing.
Tom, can you just speak closer to the mic?
Is that better?
A little bit closer.
Closer. Better?
Closer.
Even more?
There you go.
Oh, even better. Perfect. Sorry, guys. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Thomas Bushnell, because I'm representing the Parsippany Police Athletic League tonight. I just wanted to go on record tonight and say thank you from the nonprofit's point of view, from the mayor and council for your constant years of support. We look forward going forward with this new partnership and continuing to build and giving youth services back to our town and our community. So thank you from the bottom of my heart and the rest of my board members. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tom.
Come on up, sir.
Hi, myself Raj Sivivas, again from Glenmont Commons about the roads, mainly the roads, again.
Sir, just speak a little closer to the mic.
Yeah, this is Raj Sivivas from Glenmont Commons, again about the roads only. I know we have the issue with the ownership and of the roads. Who's, who's, who's the owner of the roads? The Parsippany town or the, or the developer? But we do pay taxes for the past 25 years. I'm not sure how that is incorporated with the roads at all. But the, the reason, another reason why we have an issue here is the roads are really, really bad, too many potholes that we have. Mr. Mayor helped us last time to temporarily fix some of the roads, but more potholes are coming out, and the ones that is temporarily fixed, they are also coming out. So it, it's really, really killing those. So if you can't have the same engineer walk through once more sometime and see, and many of them that was repaired, temporarily repaired, they are also getting old off, as well as there are new potholes that's coming up, pretty much. That we really appreciate if you can just, at least for temporary fix. No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, council members. My name is Yvonne Chiragowell. I've been a student of the Parsippany Troy Hills District for a very long time, since I was like, yay, big. I'm here before you today because I know you've heard from a bunch of the other gentlemen concerning the conditions of the roads of the Glenmont Commons community. But I figured that you would also appreciate the perspective of a younger representative, somebody who's more in tune with the opinions of people that are my age and of many other younger adults in the community. I would just like to echo the words that all of these gentlemen have just mentioned. As a young adult that's just started driving recently, I can tell you that I'm very, very concerned about the safety of not only the drivers, but also the pedestrians that are wa, walking along these roads. If you think about it as, as somebody that has to commute to work and as somebody that's also talked to many students that have to commute to school, when you're driving along narrow roads with little kids that are playing along the sides of the roads, or elderly senior citizens that are walking along, and your car is bumping and there's jerky behavior, there's always that feeling of uneasiness and nervousness that permeates, that you're always going to feel as soon as you start moving along these people. And that's something that seriously concerns me. That's something that I've witnessed for a very, very long time, and I know that speaking to a lot of other people, they've witnessed that, too. What I'm speaking about has nothing to do even more so of the repairs and the damage that come to the vehicles themselves that drive along these roads. I'm purely talking out of a voice of concern for the safety of the people in this neighborhood. And quite frankly, I don't know if any of you council members have any children or any teenagers of your own that drive along these roads. I'd want you to think about how safe you'd feel if these teenagers were driving along these roads, or if your kids were playing on these streets. So, uh, thank you so much for your time. I really, really appreciate everything you've done for the community. I know there are budget constraints, and I understand that's a very valuable concern, but I think this is a very legitimate issue that needs to be taken the time to think about, and I can only hope that you do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, may I have to sign in? Thank you.
Okay, my name is Ivan Faris. I lived in Parsippany for so many years. I have the concern about this gentleman, about the roads. My concern is about the people that clean the roads when it snows. This year, we didn't have many snow because I think New Jersey's turning into summer the whole year, so we don't really need so many contractors cleaning up the roads. Because I heard about other people that are talking to me about it, they are complaining that they are going back and forth in the roads when it snows, like, we only have like three inches this winter, but they are keeping going back and forth, and they ruining the roads. So I just wondered if you guys are aware of that? It happens also in my neighborhood, but it doesn't really bother me because I sleep through the night, so it doesn't really matter to me. But I heard about a lot of people complaining about that, I don't know how the contractors work. Do you guys hire them for the whole season? Even if it's not snow, they have to go back and forth in the roads, and they really ruining the roads. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up, man.
Hi, um, my name is Aleni Demakos, and, uh, my family's been here since 76, and I see, uh, the way we're, we're definitely going into an urban, we're going to, like the urbanization of Parsippany is just really hurting. And, uh, well, first of all, I was, of course, you see all the trees going down, and I know we're the green city, but, um, when I think of Trenton, because I know that this is not something that Parsippany wanted, but, um, uh, I hope that when you talk to them, that you would say, I mean, what about us being the Garden State? What's happened to the, to that? Uh, Morris County has been this beautiful, like suburban rural area, and now, um, I'm afraid of all these, uh, these townhouses coming up and just all this, whatever. First of all, um, there's a lot of corporations that I see, they're empty, and I'm like, who are we kidding? They're, no, they're, everyone's working from home now. So if Trenton really cared, why couldn't they just keep giving us, give us money, more, more money for keeping those areas green? I mean, if you have to take down the, um, the empty corporations, at least we should have empty areas. I don't know what this is about forcing all this affordable stuff down our throats, and then, of course, the developers come to, come in, take advantage of that. I mean, it's, if they, if they don't give us money to keep this green, then what about the fact of the reason why these corporations are, uh, these buildings, office buildings are empty? Because everyone's working at home now. So how would they like it if we said, why don't we tax the people who work from home? To make up for the money, to make up for the, uh, for the corporations that are sitting there empty? I mean, you know, maybe that'll change corporations, you know? I mean, it's, it's not peoples, the, the people who work for these, um, at home, it's not their fault. I mean, everyone's got to work, but they work for corporations who have now taken advantage of this, a, and it's a, it's a, it's a shame. Because we have all these corporations that I'm like, you know, everyone's got these signs, police, who are we kidding? These are all going to be redeveloped. It's going to be all, you know, we're, this is going to be urban. So why don't, why don't we, we, uh, go down to Trenton and say, as council people say, you know, either give us money for this, because basically, I feel like they're being gangsters. They've got us, like, you know, up on the throw, like, we're, like, they're doing gangster style. And, and they see that we're vulnerable, they see we've got all this empty, these corporations, they know that we're desperate to, like, just take the developers' money. So, you know, I mean, how would they like that? We'll, we'll just tax, not everybody, but the people who work from home. And then maybe the people who work from home and get taxed will, will, will speak up and complain and say, I'm not going to work with these corporations, whatever. Number two, um, I see that the affordable housing is, is, uh, the, uh, the people who, who take, the people who write up the, uh, the people who take the applications, the one I see is, uh, Piazza Associates? So Piazza Associates, they're in Princeton. I mean, I, I was hoping that somebody, the council people here would be able to overlook and, and see who they, because what I see is, I see people, I'm like, they don't, they said, on, on the bottom of the application, it says, we will give precedence first to Morris County, Warren County, Sussex. I don't see that. I see people from Newark. I mean, I, I'm afraid that crime, I go into Shopright Wharton now, there's a sign that says, uh, watch your purse. Since when did we ever have a sign, watch your purse in this area? But, and then it's, uh, it's from the Wharton Police Department. And, um, uh, so, you know, as far as Piazza Associates, I wish that the council people would have some control. Why, I don't see why they in Trenton are telling us, oh, we're reviewing the people who should be living these affordable housing. I mean, I, I know somebody, I have a personal friend living in, uh, Rockaway Borough for 20 years, and, uh, he's, he's applied for this, and he's never taken a cent from anybody. It's working, even has a heart condition, but working. Um, and, um, he, he's, we've applied to this Piazza application thing for him. Past two years, nothing. No one's ever called him, nothing. But I see everybody else coming in, I, I, I don't know. Anyway, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, I've never spoken up, and I, I hope that I got something across. But I, I am scared. I am scared because this does not look right. And, and what about?
Man, your time, time's up.
Time's up. Okay, thank you so much.
Listen, first of all, I got to respond to you. You did, you can't go back and forth, but you did a great job. For your first time up here, you did a great job.
I have no idea.
Couldn't agree, couldn't agree, I, I'm sure every, I speak for every council member up here, we don't want all this building in here. We definitely don't want it.
Uh, council president, before you start, just, I need you to take a seat.
Yeah, and we'd also, I would love to be able to give it to, and I'm sure, again, I'm speaking for everybody, I'd love to be able to give it to our own residents, the Parsippany residents that need the affordable housing. It just doesn't work that way. They are cramming it down our throat, there's nothing we can do about it. We've been fighting it, we don't want this. We don't want all this. But Trenton and everybody else, they're, they're ramming it down our throat. Ramming it down our throat, the governor, everybody else, they're just ramming it down our throat. We fought it, we're going to continue to try to fight it, but as of right now, you know, it's, it's a losing battle. Hopefully that changes.
May I?
Yeah.
And, and I agree that it is being forced, the Fair Share Housing people, I don't even know who they are, but they're, they are responsible for the new bill. And the good news, if there's any good news, is that it's a bipartisan effort to say enough is enough, and people are trying to work across towns and municipalities to, to fight it. They have to do it quickly because they're moving quickly.
And right now, we, I've met with several mayors in Morris County, um, we're contemplating ensuing state of New Jersey. Uh, I don't know if that's going to get us anywhere because these are state mandated, affordable housing is state mandated as of, um, April. They changed the laws and the rules and pretty much handcuffed the towns.
Okay, uh, anyone else? Come on up.
I, uh, Jyadip Vandavatha from Glenmont Commons. I came late, so I don't know whether it has been discussed already. We are coming from Glenmont Commons almost every town hall meetings for the last six months, uh, so like to have some update, and since we cannot go back and forth, please give us some timeline of events that would happen, because, uh, frankly, we have not seen as much development in the last six months, and, uh, just like to let you know that the patchwork that has been done, now it's all gone. So it's back to that same horrible condition again. So please give us an update with some committed timeline, please. Please do not repeat the same thing that we are hearing for the last six months. Thank you.
You want to repeat the same thing that I repeated, that I said six times already?
Sir, I think if you speak to some of the other residents that are here, I know you just came in. Mr. Lavery did give a, an update on what's going on, especially with the sewer and the water lines right now, and then hopefully our next meeting, we'll have an update on that.
And, and just, I just want to add one other thing, just for the members of the public that haven't been here for the other meetings where the Glenmont people, the town is one of, is one of the only people doing anything, one of the only entities doing anything to try to resolve this. Now, these are not the town's roads. These are the homeowners association roads, and these are the developers' roads. The township has to take an affirmative act to accept roads, which they've never done. Now, the homeowners association, up until last August, couldn't even dedicate these to the town because their own bylaws, which were filed, said that they couldn't dedicate the roads to the town. So this was only last August when they amended their bylaws to say that they could turn the roads over to the town. The problem is, those roads, other than the town salting, sanding, and making sure they're safe for the traveling public, at least that emergency vehicles can get in and out of there, nothing's been done. Now, the town did go out there and fill potholes and has tried to do what it can, but we're trying to apply pressure to the developer. As I said earlier, there's a whole bunch of different things going on here. They've got another development in Denville that they want to run that sewer through our lines, so there's, the town is moving on this, the utility's inspected the lines, we're just waiting for two more inspections, and then hopefully we can do anything. But I, I just want to make it clear that the roads have never been dedicated to the town. The town has taken care of them, has plowed the snow off them and done everything else, it's just that $4.5 million shouldn't be foisted on the rest of the taxpayers who bought houses on public roads, um, without at least putting some pressure on the developers. So that's my update. Thank you.
I see, I know, I know you guys want to make some comments, you just have to wait till after the meeting, since you already spoke, and I apologize. No, you can come up, sure. Since you're late, you only get three minutes. I'm kidding, by the way.
I know. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. So unfortunately, I kind of get the sense that the way the attorney talks is like you are doing us a favor. You're charging us taxes for the last 20, 22 years, but when it comes to fixing the road, I know you'll say, the town has not taken over the roads, because the town has to file an ordinance to take over the roads. So as far as I'm concerned, the ball is in your court. Now, what you're doing with the, with the developer is your issue. The fact of the matter for the public is this issue would have never come to pass today if the town had done what they were supposed to do in 2010.
That's incorrect. That's not true. That's absolutely, that's absolutely not true.
Yeah, that's fine. We can be on just different sides. The town had a punch list, which said the roads were not up to the town's standards. So today, if the number is four and a half million dollars, yes.
Sir, Director, Director comes to the council.
Blame it on the council, not this council necessarily, blame it on the town. So please don't act like you're doing us a favor by, you know, saying, oh, why should the overall public taxpayers pay for four and a half million dollars? If the council in its previous form in 2010 had done its job, we would not be here. Thank you very much.
Can I respond? So anytime you pave roads, the engine, they have to be built to a certain standard, right? It doesn't mean the town's going to accept them. So I've hea, heard this same argument for the last year, probably, and we've already debunked it and said, look, the town went out there and inspected the roads to make sure that the storm drains were in and stuff like that. It doesn't mean the town accepted them. And by the way, in 20 town, the town couldn't accept them because their own final bylaws said that they couldn't turn them over to the town. So those are the facts. I have the filed documents, if anybody in the public has a concern, I can always provide it to you. It's been provided to the Glenmont residents, or at least some of them that are here tonight. So those are the facts. And I didn't make it sound like the town was doing a favor, I just wanted to point out the fact that the town is the one moving this. Not the developer, not the homeowners association, but the township.
Mr. Lavery, I do have a question. You mentioned that they are seeking a legal matter with us now. Does that delay them or give them opportunity to delay?
No, because I don't, there's really no, the bond company that they posted the bonds with has gone bankrupt, there's no, I don't think it changes the situation, you know, the timing on it. I don't want to go into too much about their request to hook in from Castor Line into the sewer lines, because obviously that's something that's going to have to be approved by the township, but.
Was there ever an answer about the grant that we applied for? I think it was like 750,000?
I'm not, the only thing I knew about the grant was we checked with engineering, and engineering said you'd have to apply, like, by this June, it, but the problem is we don't own the road.
Right, I was just going to say that.
So that's, it's a chicken and the egg, unfortunately.
Township engineer said. That was the problem, the township engineer said that to apply for a grant, I said we would try anyway, uh, to see that if we applied for the grant, we get one, then they would have to dedicate the roads to us at that time. But it's up to, you know, I I will check with Justin to see where we are with that.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, can I please have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez, roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, we're now moving on to the budget section of the agenda. Second reading in public hearing, ordinance twenty twenty four zero nine, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank for calendar year twenty twenty four pursuant to NJSA forty eight colon four dash forty five point one four. The notice for ordinance twenty twenty four oh nine was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills on April twenty second twenty twenty four, and introduced at the April sixteen twenty twenty four regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty four oh nine, be heard in the second and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. McGrath, roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Oh, go ahead, come on up, Bernie.
All right. I'm on. Bernie Clark, and earlier in this meeting, at the last meeting, I brought up a number of concerns I have about the budget as proposed, and a two point of twenty-one percent increase, you know, over the last three years, and other than some limited comments today from Councilwoman Hernandez and Councilman, so I really haven't heard from anybody up here.
Is the cap bank?
What's that?
Is the cap bank?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I, sorry, sorry.
Want to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read entitled on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved as ordinance be passed on final reading, and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion approved the resolution above for ordinance twenty twenty four oh nine?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
No.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, so it's a four to one vote, motion passes. So now, we have the public hearing on the twenty twenty four budget. Can I please entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. McGrath, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, so now the floor is open to speak on the twenty twenty four budget, so Mr. Clark, if you'd like to come up, you may.
As I was saying earlier, uh, I would like to hear from some of the other council members, I've heard from, uh, Jamie Cryin about some thoughts on my one point, but not on the overall budget. I'd also, so I'm not gonna repeat all the points I brought up earlier today and at the last meeting. I would also like to remind Councilman Karifi that when you talked about the school budget going up, it's two percent every year. So the last three years, the school budget's gone up six percent by my calculation, the municipal budget's gone up by twenty-one percent, and I think that's a distinction you sometimes have left out about this particular cycle. So, I'm gonna sit down and ask some people to perhaps make some comments about cuts I suggested, or underestimates of revenue, et cetera. Thank you.
Come on up, Nick.
When do you want to have Valerie up? When do you want to have Valerie up? Once again, in support of the gentleman with the source sep- separation, we're paying, uh, what is it, two million, eight hundred and something thousand dollars, because we don't enforce the law.
Nick, this is not about the budget. This is only about the budget.
Yeah, only about.
This is only about the budget.
Well, isn't that two million, eight hundred thousand dollars part of the budget? We all split it. We all split that fee. If you, if you're a citizen and you practice source separation, you're dragged into that uh, tax, you have to share, no matter, if you have good practices, you you have to split that bill. So, you know, uh, somebody should look at it, we don't enforce anything, there are towns that do enforce it. I know it seems impossible, especially with all the plastic, but aluminum, wood, paper, and cardboard, if you have discipline, and it's enforced by the police, if the police ride down the street and they see a garbage can knock over.
Nick, this has nothing to do with the budget, about the police riding down the street. This is specifically not the budget.
We're gonna pay for the police too, and they have to contribute, try to help with the quality of life too. Right? So, right? When we had a minimum amount of people here that wanted more police, because of the, the minor crime waves that happened, but when we had nine hundred people that didn't want the pile of fuel, that that didn't matter. So, you know, you it, you can't be that selective. We'll, we have a lot of educated people in this town, and sometimes you should listen to what they say. You shouldn't be, you know, dictated. You know why they don't wanna uh, give somebody a citation for the garbage? They're afraid that you won't, you won't get a vote, 'cause oh, the guy gave you a ticket.
Citations have nothing to do with the budget. We're not having back and forth here. Are, is it, you either, you have to talk about the budget, or you have to sit down.
Okay.
Mr. Homack, I'll do this, I'll take the tonnage, Mr. Suarez, I'll go back to the BA, and I'll ask Mr. Walsh, based upon his previous comments, he said it wasn't something we could do based upon where we send our, our garbage and recycling to, but I will ask and see if there's an option for it.
If it's source separated, it's.
You will email me, and I'll reach back after you, okay?
All right, anyone else on the budget?
Okay, so seeing no one on the budget, can I please have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath, roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Floor is closed, and moving on to resolutions, R twenty twenty four seventy-nine, resolution to amend the introduced budget, can I get the motion to approve the resolution, please?
Motion.
This is just a vote on the, it looks like it's a ninety-nine dollar decrease in what it was before, and what it will be moving forward, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, who made the motion, who seconded?
Council President, I'm sorry, if, just one real quick thing on the amendment, um, the uh, state asked us to make a, a very easy, simple amendment uh, to this, because um, it's ninety-nine dollars, moving ninety-nine dollars from one column to another column, and that was their big issue with this budget. Um, as we were talking to our auditor, Valerie Dolan, who, hopefully we can bring her up uh, to speak on the budget, if it's okay with you, Council President, um, one of the things that she stated was, is the easiest state review ever, it goes to show you how good this budget is, because the state accepted it based on this ninety-nine dollar, uh, the nitpicking that they found after a, a complete review of the hundreds and hundreds of pages of this budget, was that ninety-nine dollars is in column A when it should be in column B, and we corrected that pretty easily. Would you mind, Council President, we bring up.
No, sure. Please come up, Ms. Dolan.
Valerie, you got two minutes, okay?
Thank you for your time. I do wanna say a few things about the budget while you, before you take your vote. Um, yes, we actually were required to go under state review, Precipity, because of our COVID emergencies, have been subject to state review prob- every year for the last four or five years, you are constantly reviewed by the state, which means after introduction, every document was required to go down to the division, and the division goes through your budget with a fine-tooth comb, and we got that information back, and they literally had two questions on the budget, one of them was related to the new bond sale, and they didn't have copies of the new payment schedules, which we supplied them with, and the other one was the ninety-nine dollar adjustment on a state aid number that we had stated incorrectly by ninety-nine dollars, so we had to adjust it. That was the only changes. Um, when we've seen those reviews in previous years, they've been four, five pages long for the budgets, especially even in Precipity. So that being said, this budget was approved um, by the Division for Adoption, it is within all the state cap limits, it is well below the caps that you have in place in the appropriations cap, and within the levy cap. So while you are doing the budget, and yes, there's a small increase, it does meet the requirements of the Division, and the Division has signed off in addition to us.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Oh, for the amendment.
For the amendment, yes.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes, R twenty twenty four seventy-seven, which authorizes the twenty twenty four municipal budget to be read by title only. Uh, can I get a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath, roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
So we're voting now?
No, no, this is, this resolution simply authorizes us to read the budget by title only, as opposed to reading it in full. So the next resolution is gonna be voting on the adoption of the budget, this is simply authorizing.
So much to learn, okay, yes.
Um, Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, so now, this is the vote for the adoption of the budget, R twenty twenty four seventy-eight, resolution of the township council, township Precipity, um, adoption of the twenty twenty four budget, can I please have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath, roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Okay, I have my, I have a comp, a statement.
So what we'll do is, we'll do discussion, then we'll do roll call, so this way you can have your statement, and anyone else that has a statement can go ahead and do their statement, and then we'll go into roll call.
Roll, wait, statement now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so I wrote it out, 'cause I get all tongue-tied. Um, while this budget is three percent, and it's not huge, it comes on the heels of a twenty-one pers- two years of eighteen percent, now this is twenty-one percent over three. I have had made my concerns known in these chambers and with my colleagues, and we talked about it a little bit, but my second, more detailed request for information and to discuss it didn't happen. The overestimation of budget estimates and the large number of historical vacancies, which have been a point of contention for both parties over the years, add to several millions of dollars. These sums are part of the tax burden year after year. These issues have not been considered, as I just mentioned. An attempt at further conversation was not forthcoming. The bonding and ratings are cited as the reasons to not cut the extra dollars I referred to, but that argument did not make sense to me. Future mandates, future emergencies, water, wastewater, all the things that we talk about are an argument not to use half of our ten million dollar surplus towards this tax bill. Streamlining the budget would make more sense. Precipity can partake in opportunities available to build a more sustainable economy, as I've been requesting for years, and bolster the economic growth, bringing the township dollars that will bring in more revenue and benefit the township and the taxpayers. This is happening in other towns, and other towns are doing it. So that's where I stand on budget.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez, anyone else?
Uh, I'm just gonna make a statement. You know, this budget, I've heard the comment, ghost positions, okay? For instance, in parks of forestry or in sanitation, you've had, let's just say, two openings. These positions have been filled, and then two months later, someone retires or someone leaves to go to another town to make more money. So those positions are filled, and then other positions become vacant. So if there's two positions that have been open a lot, it's not the same two positions, it's different people coming and going. Um, there's no, oh, look at Bob when I say this, in this budget, there's no sewer or water surplus used whatsoever in this budget. I know that makes you very happy back there, Bob. We had residents come and speak at multiple council meetings, saying they were willing to pay for more police. This increase is six dollars and change, and it includes three more police officers. That's basically one more patrol car on the road per shift. So for those people that wanna say, we've had residents coming and saying how they're seeing more police in their neighborhoods, well, you're about to have even more, okay? For six dollars and change per month, no cuts to any service, okay? No cuts whatsoever. I've brought up the fact, and I've used it as an example, our sanitation department. There is not one sanitation department or recycling in the county that is better than ours. You could throw out the kitchen sink every week, no one, no one in this county gets the service that we get here, and that's, that's attributed to the employees that we have for this town. So, again, I think this is a sound budget. The town was broke, couple years ago, the town was broke. We are now fiscally sound. If anybody has any questions, you can individually go ask our auditor, she will tell you, we are now fit, fiscally sound. Couple years ago, we were broke, okay?
Sixty-five vacancies, three million dollars.
Forty?
Forty-one.
Okay, and I wasn't talking about cutting anybody that would be, need to be filled, I'm talking about historical vacancies that many people on this council talked about a few years ago.
Maybe four or five years ago as well.
Okay, oh, may, maybe, and.
Oh, not maybe, definitely.
There's no water and sewer surplus, but yet the percentages of the diminished, a lot of the salaries are covered under the water and sewer and all. Okay, I, I'm not, and I think it's insulting to say to people, it's only three percent, it's only six dollars.
Less than three percent.
We, people were saying, well, a few years ago, people screaming about four percent. So my point is, it's, it's the cumulative, and if there is, in my opinion, and I respect everyone here, I just see if there's overestimation of some budget and, and underestimating of, of some of the expenses, of the revenues, it's just, year after year, it accumulates. That's, that's all I have to say.
The accumulation that took place was the depth that this town was in when Mayor Barbario took over.
Because of COVID.
Uh, no, it wasn't all because of COVID, there was a lot of money spent out of our surplus, there was no money left in the sewer and water utility, um, a lot, in my personal opinion, a lot of money was mismanaged and misspent on a lot of positions then that were not necessary. Um, so those were the positions that were eliminated. The positions that we do need are blue collar workers who are the backbone of this town, and they do the greatest job of any town that I've ever seen. and they do the greatest job out of any town that I've ever seen. They're dedicated, they're loyal, and they deserve every penny they get and more.
I don't disagree.
So, uh, these, a lot, all these positions, a lot of them are blue collar workers, that positions out of people that have retired, that have left, that have left for other jobs or are no longer working in this town. But those positions, in my opinion, to continue the services and to continue what we can, are doing in this town, need to stay. I'm adamantly against canceling any of them. Um, I, I'm not gonna say $6 a month, because that is a lot of money to some people, um, but it's, it could have been a lot worse. Uh, myself and President Karifi in budget meetings, we had, as the financing did cut a lot of things. I think this budget is fiscally responsible. It keeps all services intact. It, it keeps everyone, uh, everyone working to a, a level where I think they need to be working. It, it hires people in positions that need to be filled, and, um, I, I think it's a good budget. I, I, I'm totally against cutting anything out of it. It's fiscally responsible. That's just my personal opinion. Uh, I was very happy with the budget, and I do not want to see us going backwards. I want to see us moving forward. And this budget helps us move forward into the future, and it's put more money in the town's pocket, and I, I, you know, for these services to continue and to continue taking care of our own in-house workers, because our in-house workers, especially the blue collar workers, are the backbone of this community, and they're the biggest asset we have to make this town great, and we need to continue with that. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I'd like to-
We're not getting ready, I hope.
Go ahead, we're not, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Mucella.
I'd like to deliver some comments. Um, I, I agree with, um, a lot of the comments that I've heard from residents, you know, particularly some who have left this town because of years of excessive tax increases have driven them from being able to want to stay here. And I think it's more important than ever that we deliver on affordability now. And moving towards that goal, at the last council meeting, many of whom I see here were there then, I proposed almost a million dollars in practical and realistic cost-saving measures that, um, I'm happy to release later, um, so that the, the press can have them. Uh, but I did talk to my council colleagues. Uh, two of the four were receptive, and while Councilman McGrath will be voting for this budget, I do at least thank him for the time that he spent with me, hearing me out, not calling into a radio show to attack the proposal. Um, and I think that it's, you know, really important more than ever that we look at what we can do differently, how we can deliver better services at a cheaper cost. So I think when it comes to what's made up my mind as to how I'm gonna vote, is I think that this is a, a, another step in the wrong direction, and the residents of Parsippany can always count on me to not do that. Thank you.
Okay, um, so we have, uh, vote on the adoption of the 2024 budget. We have a motion that was made by Mr. Neglia, a second by Mr. McGrath. We had discussion, now we're going into roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
No.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mucella?
No.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes three to two. Moving on to the consent agenda. Be resolved, all items listed within the abstract are considered routine and non-controversial by the Township Council, will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Could I please have a motion to approve the consent-
Just one question.
Sure, I know, uh, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Mucella.
Yeah, I wanted to separately discuss the, uh, resolution, R 2024-076.
So, um, make a motion to remove that from the consent agenda at this point, and it will be discussed under non-consent right after this.
I'd like to make a motion to remove R 2024-076, please.
Can I get a second? Has there been a second?
A second.
Okay, second. So motion made by Mr. Mucella, seconded by Ms. Hernandez to remove R 2024-76 from the consent agenda and to be voted on separately. Uh, motion made by, uh, Mr. Mucella and seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
No.
Mr. Mucella?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi? Well, Mr. Neglia first.
No.
Mr. Karifi?
No.
Okay, so what you can do, Justin, at this point, since the motion has failed, uh, if you're choosing to vote yes on everything, you can vote yes on everything with the exception of, uh, the last, uh, the last resolution for the record, okay?
That's how I'd like my vote to be counted.
Okay, uh, so again, uh, can I please have a motion for the consent agenda in a second?
Motion.
In frame?
Second.
Okay. So a motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez. So Ms. Hernandez, if you'd like to vote yes on all the items of the consent agenda, you can do so and state with the exception of, uh, R 2024-76.
I just had a question about that.
Sure.
So I'll just do the consent agenda and then do that-
No, no, you can ask your question now, so we can address it.
About, about 2024-76, I just had a question about when we award these contracts like this in a resolution, are they then to go out to bid, or is it like, do we already have?
It's going to direct development. That's the town's current vendor.
Council President, I-
Okay, I have-
Good.
They, uh, they already went out to bid, uh, went out for proposals at the beginning of the year. Uh, they were not, uh, uh, done the way that they, uh, should have been done, uh, so this is correcting a, a small error. So they've been our, um, public relations, uh, uh, provider for this year and last year as well. Uh, this is just a dotting i's and crossing d's from our new QPA who's trying to make sure that we do everything correctly.
Okay, that was really my only question about that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Uh, roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mucella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, approval of minutes for the agenda meeting of, uh, April 2nd, 2024, and April 16th, 2024. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mucella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, good, moving on to presentations and reports. Mayor?
Also, we will be coming together at 10 o'clock at Veterans Memorial as a community to honor the bravery and sacrifices of our servicemen and women. Seat belts are defense on the road. Click it or ticket was underway starting yesterday through June 2nd, so buckle up, drive safely. Do not speed on residential roads and avoid fines as you travel. I saw on Facebook comments going back and forth with regards to the NJ DOT staging area of 202 and Route 80. I spoke to the township engineer, we had been in discussion on this several times. And the understanding, and I spoke to them, is that the DOT has leased property to another entity. So I called the DOT, Christopher Andoli, who covers Morris County, and I'm waiting for a call back. Our township engineer has been trying since the project completion to have tried to get it restored. Also, there are signs around town with regards to cannabis that we deliver. I spoke to our township attorney, and it only applies to medical, so those signs will be removed. I spoke to the zoning office department. Also, I did, I had a very great meeting with the PAL last week. Tom, Nick, I want to thank you for the partnership that we are creating and the partnership in the future and all the things that you're going to be doing for the town. And I want to find an email that I got today, if I can find it, from Tom with regards to with regards to a gentleman during a, was it a basketball game? Had cardiac arrest. And Emily that works in the PAL grabbed the AED and brought the person back, and the person was brought to the hospital. So you can commend her from the township, the mayor of the township and the council as well. So this leads me to what I, I know, Mr. Clark, and you're waiting for my response with regards to, and I really wasn't going to make a comment, but I was listening to you throughout the last meeting and this meeting here with regards to your plan, and you're calling it 21%. So I wanted to just make one thing clear, and I'm sure you know that since you're a C P A, and I respect your title, but the method that you are applying, or you want us to apply, is that we are underestimating, no, under anticipating our revenues and over anticipating our expenses. Okay, so let's get back to 2021. In 2021, this is the same formula that was used by the administration. They over anticipated revenues and under anticipated expenses. So what's that mean? If you don't realize those dollars, you've got to make up for it. So I came into this office, and here comes your 14.63%, eight and a half million in a hole. Why? Underestimated expenses and overestimated the anticipated revenues. Now, not only that, and I'm sure you know this, I don't know if you were at the council meetings then with regards to the prior administration, they ask for special dispensation. Now, what does special dispensation mean? That means the local finance boards allows you to break the local finance laws. They allow you to overestimate what you're not allowed to do, when you're not allowed to use three base years of your anticipated revenues and your expenses. Well, the state gave them special dispensation. You put, Mr. Clark, and you brought up the hotel tax. So at the time, the budget passed, the hotel tax was at $400,000. That was in August. So they anticipated in revenue $2 million, or 2.1 million, I can't quite remember. Well, subtract that, and how much in a hole are you in? We were in a hole already a million something when it came to the over anticipation of revenues. I'm not going to use that formula, I could tell you that much, because it's a formula for destruction for a township, for any township that does that. Okay? So let's get to this now. You made a comment tonight with regards to our certified finance manager, that he works for the town. Well, you know, he has a license. He's a certified, no, no, excuse me, I'm just responding. No, you said the CFO, that's beside the point. He's a certified public manager.
We're not having back and forth.
Now, let me explain, I didn't interrupt you, sir.
We're not having back and forth, sir.
I did not interrupt you, you were addressing me too. All right, and I'm talking now. I'm talking, you're getting angry, we know what that means, so we're losing the argument. But that's beside the point. Let's get, let's get to the Moody's Standard &amp; Poor.
Please, please, sir, please be quiet.
Let's get to Moody's Standard &amp; Poor. He wants to come and tell you that it's okay if you get downgraded a little bit, or maybe just get up a little bit. No, it's not okay. You know what that, you know what that indicated? That tells you how good your town's running. That's what Moody's Standard &amp; Poor and his rating agencies are telling you. Your town is running great. That's why we're going to upgrade you. Even if your bond rating goes up a little bit, it says your town's running great. And that's what they're saying to us. I came in in 2022 in a mess, okay? I took the bull by the horns. I like to use the 21% because the 14.63% was the makeup I had to make for 2021. Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't going to sit here and let the town fail. I had to make a tough decision. And I told everybody during the election, and when I became the mayor, that whoever becomes the mayor is going to have to make some tough decisions. I made it. And if you're not a Ronald Reagan fan, I pulled a Ronald Reagan, which he had to do when he was the governor of California. So that being said, the reason why I'm bringing this up, Mr. Clark, and that formula that you want the town to run by in this council is going to bring us into debt again. It's that simple. And I'm not going to do that. And one more comment I'd like to make. Glen Montgomery, I feel for you, I really do. I've been up to those roads. We can fight this together, or we can fight with each other, no need to. The young man, your comment was great. You know what? Why don't you write a letter to the owner and the developer as well? Write whatever you're saying to us, write to them, because then we're a team. We go in forces. It's very difficult for us right now to sit here and say we can pave all the roads into town. We would love to. But when they're not ours, it makes it much more difficult, because it'll bring on an array of other developers when they come into town and say, well, you paved that road, so we're going to pave our road. So that being said, I just want to close out with this. First of all, comments were made tonight with regards to cuts that Mr. Musella offered to make. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to break those cuts out for you. He talks about in the mayor's office, total tax, this is one, one version, then there's another version, it goes from 800 to 700,000, then it's 800,000, then when he posted on Facebook, it's a million dollars. So, you know, you can just continue to buy, catch a fish this big, by the time you get to the end, it's this big. So mayor's office total taxpayer savings, he says 183. What's he want to cut? He wants to cut the way we interface with the public. That's what he wants to cut. He wants to cut the way I get to interface with you, we get to interface, and the way we get to send our emails out. That's what he wants to cut. But he doesn't tell you that my budget has decreased 22% on salaries. The administration, he wants to cut the administrator's assistant, who's always had an assistant and should have an assistant. But he doesn't tell you that that portion in the budget went down 24%. Finance taxpayer savings, $85,000. He wants to remove the assistant to the chief financial manager. And that position is recommended to have by an auditor. Why? For continuity, another set of eyes to check the, check the numbers in the books. I have to get to this one here, because this one really kind of blows my mind. The planning board taxpayer saving. He wants to cut $130,000 out, okay, saying that it's escrow, because we get escrow, we get paid back, that has to do with pilots. No, it has to do with redeveloper fees, okay? We can't wait, we can't wait to pay a vendor or an attorney six months. Why? Because if you'd known this, you probably wouldn't have made this cut. We have procure, who came to say the word? Procurement process. We have to follow procurement laws. We have a QPA that does that. We, we can't make individuals wait to get paid, but we get paid back. Okay? So I don't know, maybe it's going to be 1.5 million tonight on the Facebook page, I don't know, but I'm saying, it's all over the place. But I had to get that out, only because I want you to know what we cut in our departments and what we continue to do. I take the recommendations from our experts, from our professionals. That's what I do. I don't take recommendations for political purposes. Yes, I was on the radio this morning, so what? I'm going to be on the radio a lot more, I could tell you that right now, so I'll tell you when you can tune in and you can listen. But he is allowed to go out on social media, but I'm not allowed to. So I'm going to tell you, I'm going to be out there a lot more, you're going to get the truth, you're going to get a lot of truth, and you're going to, and you know what? I, I guess I said in the very beginning, when I came back to be the mayor, I had to make some tough decisions. Okay, we made them. I sat with Councilman McGrath on several occasions, Councilman Karifi, Councilman Neglia. We also sat with Councilman Musella, and we sat with the councilwoman, okay? A lot of stuff from here today, they're not here in my office, I could tell you that, except for the other three. Matt, I appreciate the back and forth we had, you know, we had some back and forths, the way it should be, okay? He understands, we all understand. You can't cut your way to prosperity. It's impossible. So when you're saying that Moody's Standard &amp; Poor isn't that important, or this isn't that important, it is important. It's important because it's an indicator of how your town's running. So when you get downgraded, guess what? Your town's not running good. That's exactly what it means. Thank you, Council President.
Yeah, I would just like to respond to what the mayor said. You know, first and foremost, when it comes to the recommendations that I made, who, you know, clearly fell on deaf ears, I just want to read them into the record, it's what I said at the last meeting, but I'll say it again. From the cuts that I proposed for the mayor's office, 60,000 was a portion for the direct development contract, and I had argued that it's been unclear what specific communicative value direct development has brought to the township as judged by the township, towns' Facebook posts and the low resident engagement. A majority of the posts just are images with text or the mayor doing ribbon cuttings. I had said eliminating the $28,000 as a part-time secretary, because the job's not even posted for hiring. And then lastly, I also said that keeping the mayor's public information budget at $40,000 as it was $10,000 in 2023 and $10,000 in 2022. When it comes to the administration, I was flexible. I said that I would be open to giving the communications specialist at $77,000 if the contract for direct development was eliminated, because I think it's duplicative spending, and we should do one or the other. And then also the vacant position of the assistant to the BA at $70,000. And then when it comes to finance, the assistant to the CFO has been a position that has been open for over two years at $85,000, and we have been operating fine without it. So you can say what you would like, but I made realistic recommendations to you, and you consistently offer excuses for why no changes can be made. So that's just setting the record straight.
Well, that's, first of all, I'm just going to end it with this. Everything you just said about the, what do you call it, social media, you did not say in my office, number one. So that's a fact, you never brought that up with regards to eliminating, I mean, using $77,000. You actually, you're actually pretty happy that we cut that position down to $10,000. So, you know, you've got to stop double talking. So we'll end it there. If you ever want to talk offline and get some realistic numbers, I'll give them to you.
Any other member from council?
Yes, so I got two things I want to talk about. One is the Parsippany Area Chamber of Commerce held a networking meeting this morning, and over 75 local businesses had the opportunity to network. The event is free to all local businesses. You must register at parsippanychamber.org. The next event will be held on Tuesday, June 18th, at 8:30 a.m. at 90 East Halsey Road, third floor. And for economic development, we have a meeting coming up that we're going to talk about the new streetscape project that's coming up at Beverwick. And that meeting will be discussing the improvements all across Beverwick Road, Lake Hiawatha, which is starting in early June. The Economic Development Committee will also discuss grants there. We've given over $600,000 worth of grants applied for over 15 businesses. And just to remind you, you can secure around $75,000 each in a grant upon funding approval. There's all sorts of different things that you can, you know, go for, whether it's fixing up the front of your buildings, internal pieces, and even working towards your leasing. And you can reach out to Frank Cahill at 973-559-6000. And we have three more openings coming up that the public is invited to. On June 1st, at 10 a.m., Jackson Cuts at 52 North Beverwick Road, Lake Hiawatha. June 8th, 1:30, Y2 Academy, 108 Route 46 Parsippany. And June 13th, at 1:30, Sunbelt Rentals, 950 Edwards Road, Parsippany, open house from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. So public's all invited, and hopefully you guys can make it. Thank you.
The Parsippany Environmental Advisory Committee had a great turnout at the American River Screening at the Parsippany Library on May 11th. There were over 75 people in attendance. The film screening was a collaborative effort of the Parsippany Environmental Advisory Committee, the Parsipony Green Team, and Wildlife Preserves, whose story and history was featured significantly in the film. So if you get a chance to see the American River, it's a great watch. Our next initiative will be tree education, which will correspond with the new stormwater ordinance that has just been adopted. And that will require every municipality to revise and strengthen their tree ordinances. And as we are the tree city, we often have issues, though, with contractors and builders who might not be aware of overcutting, even to the point where they might even accidentally cut town trees. So we're hoping that the town, the tree education that will also be at the Parsipony Library will help residents and, well, help residents understand why this ordinance will be important. The traffic committee has a few vacancies. The group is committed to advocating for all traffic concerns and appreciates comments for residents. They meet third Thursday at the Parsipony Library. A lot happens at that library every third Thursday. And Parsipony Child daycare center is doing well, and I don't have really much to add. They're just moving along, and they're in the, in the block, so that's good. And that's about it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Anyone else from town council? Okay. Township attorney?
I got something, I'm sorry.
No, it's too late, too late, Ms. Hernandez. Just kidding.
Go ahead. Um, just in regards to the library and the PAL, I was with Mayor Barberia at the PAL, and when we had the meeting, they have a lot of work they're doing there. They had some water damage in the walls, and if you walk in there, you'll see a lot of it's been sectioned off. They have some contractors coming in to repair a lot of the water damage. But the new director, I have to say, I'm very pleased with him, and, you know, they have, you know, a lot going on there, doing a heck of a job with it. Also, one thing that I was a little taken back, though, in talking to the new director, and I wanted to bring it up, and I couldn't understand why, is that he said he received a call from Councilman Musella, his first hour on the job, basically telling him that we're cutting $175,000 budget from his budget. And I was a little taken back on that, because that never came up in any of the budget discussions I had with President Karifi and Mayor Barberia and Jamie Cryin. So I'm just curious, you know, why he called him and why he said that to him. And I know the vice president is here now, and he heard that as well. And I'm just curious, you know, was it a misunderstanding or what? But that just took me back a little, because I am the liaison to the PAL, and I would think any of those questions, you know, I mean, I would gladly ask those questions on behalf of the council. The other liaison I am to is the library, and they have some things they'd like to talk to the town about regarding health insurance. They said they did reach out to Fairview, and I guess they're looking to talk to them, so I don't know if they've gotten back to them, if they can, if they can make, put a nudge to them to get back to them, because they have some questions. And they also stated that they're putting a new roof on Lake Hiawatha Library, and they also like to talk to the town about that. I'm not exactly sure about what, but I have an idea what it's about, but I'll let you guys figure that out. That's an administration item to discuss. And that's it on that.
It's about money, probably.
What's that?
It's probably about money.
I'm sure it is. I don't know what the cost is, I didn't hear that, but I'm sure that it has something to do with who's going to pay for it.
Yes.
Yeah, let me just respond to you, Councilman Neglia. You're right, so we give the PAL $175,000. The reason for the inquiry is the PAL is an independently funded organization, it's a 501(c)(3), and we also have our own department for parks and recreation. So the thought behind that is that money should stay in the Departments of Parks and Rec, where we have better oversight, better control of how that money is spent compared to the PAL, which is an independent organization from the town.
PAL serves the whole town, all the children of the town, the community, and it's a, it's a big part of the town of Parsippany. I've lived in this town since 1966, and I remember when the PAL was actually a little building behind the firehouse in Lake Hiawatha. So I'm a, I'm a big proponent of the PAL, I want to see it succeed, and anything we as a town can do. You know, funding wise, it's, you know, that's always been the case. And same thing with the library. We give them 400,000, well, how much we give the library?
400,000 for health benefits.
400,000 for health benefits, and how much you give me a year? Three million?
Well, we don't, it's a, it's a formula with your ratables, so they get three point, I forget what they got this year, 2.3.
I mean, we give them funding too, and this is for the town of Parsippany. This is for the people of Parsippany. So in my opinion, we have to do that, because we're here to service the people of Parsippany, and I think that's important. And you can make fun of me all you want back there, I really don't care. I see you making fun of me and shaking your head at me.
So, so just to clarify one thing with the PAL. It's like a shared service agreement. We give them 175,000 a year, but our offices for recreation are in the PAL. They let us have the offices, because we have no, we have no room. You know, town halls is not, you know, conducive of putting anything in. So we kind of run together. So, and they don't charge us for the offices. So we have our recreation department there, and they work in tandem.
Okay, anyone?
What's the township attorney?
No report this evening, Council President. Business administrator?
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Thank you to the council for passing this budget. The overall increase in the tax rate is 1.87. The municipal portion is 2.78, it's roughly $6 per month, and $75 per year impact to the average residential home. There's a lot of talk about surplus and fund balance and, you know, and increases over the last couple of years. If you look at the increases over the last couple of years, they didn't come from salaries. They didn't come from added services. It came from underfunded budgets from the prior administration. That's, I mean, that's clear. That is, it, excuse me, excuse me. It came from underfunded budgets from the last administration. That's what it came from. You can definitely make an argument that COVID was involved in that, but every other municipality dealt with COVID. COVID wasn't a Parsippany thing. COVID was a country thing. And every, excuse me, excuse me, every other municipality dealt with it in the way that they were supposed to, in a responsible manner. This budget now is at the tail end of the fix. This budget allows for the additional hires that are necessary to support our employees, to help them do their job, because they're doing it the best that they can. And if anybody has complaints about the employees not doing their jobs well, for the most part, it's that they are overworked, and they are taking on too much. It's not that people are putting up their feet and not doing the job. That's not what's happening here in Parsippany. And, Mr. Clark, and you're making some faces and some, no, excuse me, let me finish.
We're not, sir, we're not having a back and forth.
I'll let you speak, I'll let you speak. So I'm going to address you, Mr. Clark, and exactly. You talked about the township using their professional, their guy who is, and he's going to say whatever the town says, right? That's what you said. That our financial advisor is, of course, he's going to go with what the town said, right? Yeah, right? Well, that financial advisor was not hired by me. I would have hired him, because he is an expert. It was hired by your son, who was part of the last administration. So that financial advisor was hired by the past administration, and it's been continuing on. So this isn't me saying I'm going to get my guy to say what I want.
Sir, sir, you had the opportunity to speak to us. Now we are speaking. Please be quiet.
I'm getting, I got your son's guy to tell us, to tell us that you are incorrect. So it is what it is. Now, you can look at some of these cuts that were proposed, and, you know, unfortunately, this becomes a really political process, much more political than any other municipality that I've ever dealt with. You know, I've dealt with Hudson County, and they're just, oh, it's real political down there. This is crazy political. You know, I have an administrative assistant who leaves, and the council votes to eliminate that position. She's been there for over 20 years. It's not like there's, you know, the work is going away with her. It's, that's not what happens. It's truly insane. You know, especially when the, if you compare the 2022 salaries in the administration department to the 2024 salaries, it's a 24% cut. That doesn't happen. Find another municipality that happens. The executive branch, 2022 to 2024, it's a 22% cut. Cutting parks, three employees in parks, two of those positions are filled already. One of them has already been offered. So you have three positions that we're looking to cut, and that were voted on to cut. What were we going to do? Fire these people? I mean, and if you look at, you can ask the employees in parks. 20 years ago, 10 years ago, there were so many more employees. Now, we're starting to catch up to where we should be. We still need an extra, DBW is going to be asking for three more employees in parks next year. I'm going to do my best to advocate for that to you guys, because they need the help. They definitely need the help. 10 or 15 years ago, there were more employees in those departments. Now, there's more work in those departments. They're doing more. So, you know, this notion that, oh, there's all these vacant phantom positions, and then employees are just sitting around not doing anything, is really, it's insulting. We have great employees who are doing their jobs to the best of their ability. Not everybody's perfect, but not everybody's perfect in your positions and your companies that you work for either. We have great employees. We are doing our absolute best. And to, you know, when we talk about underfunding or over anticipating revenue as a strategy, that is obviously a failed strategy, because it showed to be a failed strategy two years ago in this, in this very town, in this, with these, with those budgets. Over anticipating revenues is not what you're supposed to do as a conservative body. And that's not a Republican or Democrat. We are supposed to be fiscally conservative. That's supposed to be our role. You know, maintaining a fund balance is what is supposed to happen, an adequate fund balance from year to year. It enables consistency, consistency and a stable tax rate. And that's what we have to have as our goals. So all of these up and downs has to do with correcting issues of the past. And saying that these bond agencies, these credit reporting agencies, oh, it's, we don't need to worry about them, what they say is not that big of a deal, that blows my mind to have financial advisors or financial experts saying that. If you don't have great credit, you shouldn't get great rates. That's simple. And that's, that's, that's what applies to municipalities, applies to companies too. That's, it's a simple premise, and that's how it should be taken here, too. I mean, you know, they said it best. The outlook revisions reflects our view of the township significantly improved finances during the past two fiscal years. That's what S and P said. That's not what, you know, Johnny Republican Committee said. That's not what Joey Public Worker said. That's what this independent body said, that is an expert that advises people to invest in different things. That's as good as it gets from my point of view. And again, I'd like to thank the department heads for doing a great job in providing as much information as possible and working with us through this process. Thank this council and mayor for putting their hard work in. Especially, I'd like to thank Glenn, who is sitting here silently, but does an incredible, incredible job for us, making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do and staying compliant. And that's all I have, Council President.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Leonard Ho recommends authorization for payment. Number one, authorizes payment of the May 2024, May 24, 2024 regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1,650,000. And number two, payment of bills from voucher list of 515, 24 through 517, 24, which is $2,697,414.14. Can you get a motion to approve the authorization, please?
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Okay, can I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make them up.
Well, that was quick. Okay, motion by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.